Counselor McDonald is not attending. He's excused. And Counselor Gillio is a moment late. He just texted me, so he'll be here in a minute. We'll start this off with a flag salute. We have help today, so if everybody could please stand. Well, thanks to State and Cub Scout PAC 7050. So today, we have presentations from the Veterans of Foreign Wars and Guitars for Vets. David Welch.
I was just going to say Counselor, while he's coming up, but you came up faster than I could speak. I just want, we've got three presentations lined up, and it's really just to, and one of the reasons why we invited the scout troop to do the flag ceremony is it's sort of the kickoff to our Veterans Day appreciation celebration, so I just wanted to note that. Thank you.
See? Oh, there we go. Hi. So, thank you once again for inviting me back. I was here last year. So, once again, thanks. My name is David Welch. I am the coordinator/instructor for Guitars for Vets, which we teach out of the Salem Vet Center over there. Once again, this is a program that offers veterans free guitars with lessons so that they can battle PTSD, depression, anxiety, and such, to help them cope with some of the issues that they face living in the civilian world. With that, I am also the quartermaster for the VFW here in Staton, the Saniam Canyon Post, and I'm also the senior vice commander for the district here for the VFW also. So, last year, I brought up some points about veteran services that are in the area and some deficits that could be fixed that we are looking at. I'm happy to announce that over the last year, progress has been made. We are looking at a larger communication between veteran programs that is due to such places as VetNet, which is holding monthly meetings between different veteran organizations that all volunteer to participate in these calls and introduce their programs and stay in communication with each other. I'm also working with Vet Care in Salem, who's helping veterans that need to be rehoused and helping them find employment and get back on their feet, which has been a huge blessing to this community. This Saturday, we will actually be putting on the first, that I know of, Vet Music Festival in Salem, Oregon. This will be at the Salem Armory at 1600, in which we will have Ty Curtis, Johnny Wheels, and Swamp Donkeys, and myself opening. And that will be something that we want to kick off so that veterans, that are musicians, can participate this going forward. And looking at it, we want, if we get enough support this year, we want to make this so that every year, there's a different music genre. This year, it's kind of blues and jazz. I'm not going to be doing blues and jazz. I'm sorry. It's just not going to happen. But next year, maybe country, maybe some rock. But we want to get our veterans more prominently noticed in the community and noticed for more than just their service, but what they are as an individual. So, once again, I'm very proud to be working with the programs that are here. Like Mark here from Honoring Heroes, he'll introduce himself, but he's an amazing program, a great benefit to this area immediately. So, thank you.
Thanks, David. So, next up, Daughters of the American Revolution, Jeanne Barnes.
Thank you for inviting me. My name's Jeannie Barnes. That's okay.[329.13][329.13](laughing) I'm Regent of Abigail Scott Dunaway Chapter of DAR, Daughters of the American Revolution here. I'm also National Chair or Representative for the Portland VA for Veterans. And I just want to tell you just a little bit about Daughters of the American Revolution. The National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution is a nonprofit, nonpolitical women's service organization dedicated to preserving the memory and spirit of the men and women who achieved American independence. As an organization committed to historic preservation, education, and patriotism, we know that examining history helps us to better understand our nation's long struggle to providing equality, justice, and humanity for all Americans. We recognize that the United States of America was built on the promise of equality for all, and we share an obligation to help our nation fulfill that founding promise. Our National Society encourages and celebrates a diverse membership, and we embrace the opportunity to support our members. One of the things I mentioned was patriotism, and DAR members' love of country is evident in the multiple, excuse me, the multiple patriotic endeavors they pursue and include. Providing more than 200,000 hours of volunteer time annually to veterans and veterans administrations and non-VA facilities. Offering support to American service personnel and current conflicts abroad through care packages, phone cards, and other needs and items. Sponsoring special programs promoting the Constitution during its official celebration week, which is of September 17th through the 23rd. Participating in naturalization ceremonies. Presenting patriotic awards deserving to individuals, including Outstanding Veteran Volunteer Award, DAR Good Citizen Award, and medals, ROTC medals, and community service awards. We've been doing this now for 125 years, and as, is I not speaking loud enough? Thank you. As a Portland VA representative, which also represents the Portland VA Hospital here in Salem and clinic, we do everything from what we call Operation Diaper Bag, which helps our veteran women who are here and in need of items, or if their husbands are abroad. That's one of the things. The other things is we help the women's program up at the Portland VA, and we provide musical instruments also. So, anyway, that's just a little bit about our DAR. This is Linda Bannister.
Hi, everyone. I'm past Regent of Abigail Scott Dunaway, and I'm pleased to be here again. I just wanted to mention that we're a smaller chapter, but we are mighty in our efforts for our local community. So, in particular, for our veterans and first responders, you may remember that we came to honor two distinguished, DAR distinguished citizens, Sergeant, Detective Sergeant Paul Eves and Police Officer Brody, a few years back. And just this last year, we were particularly proud of honoring Sublimity Fire District and their Comfort Canine Program with their handler, Amber, and of course, Comfort Dog Brody and Barney. So, we do also have interest in, we don't have schools in the canyon or our area, which stretches from Silverton to Jefferson. We don't have any JROTC programs, but we do support the Salem Composite Civil Air Patrol and their military education program for their cadets with the DAR Outstanding Cadet Medal. So, and thank you, every veteran here. Thank you for every family that supports veterans. Thank you so much.
Yes, that's one of our biggest causes, so thank you. And as an ex-veteran myself and Linda, we do respect and honor them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I worked with the Daughters of the American Revolution for ROTC awards when I was teaching ROTC.[636.00][636.00](laughing) They did a great job. All right, up next, honoring heroes, Mark Buchholz. Did I say it right?
That's close. I've heard it any which way you can possibly imagine. My name is Mark Buchholz, and I'm the founder and chairman of Honoring Heroes. Just a little background about myself. I'm an eight-year, or excuse me, I'm a six-year Air Force Army, gosh dang it. I am an Air Force veteran for six years. I was a heavy equipment operator and fueled aircraft while stationed at Langley Air Force Base in Virginia. I got to travel around a little bit, got to go to Germany and Jamaica, which wasn't too bad. I retired from the Oregon Department of Corrections. I was employed as correction officer at the Oregon State Penitentiary for nearly 30 years. While at the penitentiary, I volunteered as a peer supporter for 10 years, served on our union representation board for eight years, and was a crisis negotiator and trainer for 19 years, 17 of those years in which I was the team leader. I've lived in Sublimity for over 33 years, married for 30 years to my wife, April, who served in the Oregon National Guard for 24 years. We have four kids, seven grandkids, and a great-grandson. The mission statement of Honoring Heroes is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization dedicated to assisting United States veterans, active-duty military, and their families. Honoring Heroes started in 2009. One day, I was on the way to work, listened to the radio, and I heard a radio interview on, about our troops serving in Iraq, and they needed some necessity items, just basic materials such as nail screws, tape, and it kind of shocked me that our troops actually needed that. You know, it just seemed kind of bizarre. So, I got ahold of the radio station and talked to a reporter and said, hey, where can I send some stuff to? I talked to my boss at work, the superintendent, who was a Marine, well, once a Marine, I was a Marine, and he said, let's do it. And so, I collected a bunch of money from my coworkers, and we ended up sending like over, like, I think, 68 packages to Iraq. And then, the next couple of years, we started collecting more money, sending more packages, and we weren't sending just crappy packages, we were sending awesome packages. You know, beef jerky and awesome, you know, coffees and creamers, and I would actually contact the people over there, what they needed, and they'd give me a laundry list, and I'd send it over. It was pretty cool. Then, 2012, I kept getting approached to provide more help for our vets in the community. At this point, I decided I wanted to go forward and make this an actual official nonprofit because you really can't solicit funds or donations from people, and they're like, well, can I get a tax receipt? Well, I don't, I can't give that. Anyway, so, I met with an attorney. If you ever looked at a 501(c)(3) packet application form, it's about that thick, and it's about page three, you want to, head wants to melt. So, we applied for the status, and after lengthy 15 months of delays from Washington, DC, I'd call them up and say, hey, where are we at? They're like, well, you're number 15 on the queue. Call back in two months. I called back. Hey, where we at? You're number 15 on the queue. You're number 15. We never moved. So, I was complaining to my attorney, says, call Kurt Schrader. So, I called Schrader's office and explained to him what was going on, and three days later, I had our nonprofit status, so he got stuff done. Since then, we've joined efforts with many local community partners. These include transitional centers, like David said, Vet Care, I work a lot with them, and Guitars for Vets a lot. Anytime I get a musical instrument, I go, hey, David. I work with a lot of veteran community housing, local VA case managers, mental health counselors, homeless veteran centers. We're basically, we don't focus on one item like PTSD treatment or, you know, housing. We're kind of like the Swiss Army knife. We kind of fill all the voids that other organizations can't fill. A lot of times, they get grants, and the grants, for example, will say, you can't use any of this grant money until your veteran's been off the caseload for 30 days. Well, he might need, you know, a pair of work boots to start his new job, or a microwave. Well, so, I said, we come in and we fill those gaps. It's our policy that we help the veterans that are in need, not in want. If someone makes enough money, sorry dude, you're going to get it yourself. Just like, you know, if I want a new car, I have to save for it. We have, obviously, we have assistance applications, papers required, they have to meet qualifications. We are called Honoring Heroes, so one of the criteria, you have to be honorably discharged, sometimes even a general discharge, depending on the circumstances. All of us board members and volunteers are uncompensated for our efforts. Like I said, I retired five years ago from the state. Now, I have a busier unpaid job than I ever had. I keep telling buddy, I need to go back to work so I have time off. Like, today, I spent half the day in Portland running a bunch of donations up there to one of our community partners. We've never told a veteran we couldn't help them because we can't afford it. I've told people, I'm not going to help you because, A, you can't afford it yourself, and B, you really don't need a four-seater side-by-side to take your buddies out fishing. I've had that request. They only spent 35 grand for a side-by-side. No, sorry. We're very proud of our accomplishments, and I think the last 15 years, we've helped, I don't even know the exact number, but it's got to be several hundreds of people we've assisted, whether it's purchasing a new bed, paying electric bill, buying a pair of work boots for the new job, providing wheelchair ramp or whatever's needed. We never ask for repayment. A thank you is enough. We're here to provide a hand up, not a handout, like I said, and I'm pretty, I'm real proud of what we do. And any questions? Follow us on Facebook, that's where I do all of our updates. We have a webpage, but we don't update that, but, all right.
Thanks, Mark. That was really, really insightful.
Can I make a caveat? Because Mark, Mark here is being kind of humble. Mark's organization will go to a veteran's home and repair their front door for them. Mark will go to a veteran's...
Is he in the microphone?
Mark's organization will go to a veteran's home and help them set up a garden in their backyard. This isn't him just cutting a check and dropping off stuff. He gets hands-on with the veterans, gets to know them, and personally impacts their lives right then and there. So, when I said earlier, we are very proud to have his organization in this community, I wasn't underselling that by any means whatsoever, so.
Thank you.
I just have a question for you. Do you have any upcoming events or ways to get involved?
We're always looking for volunteers because there's always things that come up. Like, we just did our biggest event of the year. That was in August. We did, we do our annual poker run, and primarily, people think it's just for motorcycles, but you can have a motorcycle, car, truck. I don't care if you're bringing your '82 Chevy Chevette. It's come on, have fun. It's an awesome event. We're always doing something to figure out if we can raise money, doing raffles. Something pops up, like, Sunday at Snow Peak Brewery, they're doing an event, and they asked us to come on and help, you know, we'll do that. Snow Peak's one of my sponsors also, and, you know, David, like, they need, the Vet Fest is coming up, so we helped sponsor that. We bought a bunch of tickets, and I gave them out to our community partners, Easter Seals, and I talked to their senior case manager. I said, here's a bunch of tickets, you know, give them out to people that are actually going to go, because they cost me 20 bucks apiece. But it's just a way to go out there and support. There's such a huge, huge need out there. It's crazy what, the need that's out there, but there are a lot of great organizations working together, but there's always things that fall through the cracks we just don't know about. Sadly, I mean, I've talked to veterans and working with case managers, you know, they're, you know, we've been, like the Gulf War, that started in 1990, and it just ended a while ago. That's a long time. We, you know, sort of 33 years, you know, that's a lot of people they've came back, and a lot of the people, they just don't want the help just yet. Like, one guy says, I just seen a tent, a sleeping bag, and a tarp. That's all I want for right now. I just can't deal with people. And once I, once I can deal with that, I'll go to Vet Care, or I'll go to, you know, another organization and work your way up. But, you know, it's just trying to find that need and try to get the help that they actually need. You know, sometimes, like, this last week, somebody, one of my community partners says, hey, this guy's not on our case, but he needs a bed. And so, I said, well, he's got to fill out the application, you know, so he filled it out, and, you know, the guy's making like 990 bucks a month, you know, barely pays for his rent and utilities, so, yeah, we bought him a brand-new bed and delivered, nicest, look on Facebook what we did, nicest guy ever. And then, I'm like, dude, where are you sitting at? And he says, I'm on the floor. I go, you want a couch or a recliner? Now, we only do new upholster furniture because of high genetic reasons. And so, me and a volunteer, you know, we delivered a bunch of stuff to him, and, no, he's got, he's got a home now, not just a place to sleep. But it helps out. That's how I met David. We were moving a guy, we were moving a guy in State, and the guy was late to get there. So, me and, well, Roy, who runs Vet Care, we're sitting in the back of my trailer, it's pouring on rain, and pretty soon, this big guy starts walking up to us, and I said, well, he's either going to fight us, or he's going to talk to us. It was David, hey, what are you guys doing? We're moving that guy. And so, now, we're helping each other out all the time, so, works out great, but I tend to ramble a lot, so, all right.
So, Counsel President Sims, can I just, first of all, thank you for everybody that came, and this is the second year that we've, the second year that we've done a presentation. The first year was just sort of threw something together, but I like how it's grown, and I like the information. I think that's wonderful. I just also wanted to remind you that we are, as of tonight, you'll see city buildings and offices are, have green lights in honor of Operation Green Light. It's a national initiative honoring and supporting veterans from November 4th to 11th. State and City Hall and other buildings will be illuminated green, serving as a beacon of gratitude and recognition of our veterans, and we encourage all residents and businesses to participate by placing a green light in their windows and, or using a green bulb in their outdoor lighting. Just the more we can talk about veterans and what is available and share and honor, I think, the better.
Well, thanks, everybody. As a retired Navy, I do appreciate this. Cub Scout PAC 7050, Veterans of Foreign Wars, Daughters of the American Revolution, and Honoring Heroes. I thank all of you. That was really nice. Thanks a lot. All right, we're going to move on to, is there any additions to the agenda? None? Declaration of Ex parte contacts, conflict of interest, bias? See, none? All right, next up is the consent agenda for October 1st, 21st, 2024, City Council Regular Session Minutes.
Mayor Pro Tem, this is Counselor Paddy. I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I will second.
Consent agenda is motioned and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0. All right, next up is public comment. I got a little spiel I got to read. The council will now receive public comment. We value the time and initiative members of the public take to share their thoughts with the council. The council's role during public comment is not to immediately respond, but to listen. If there is follow-up necessary, we will direct the city staff to do so. Remember that we all model the way for our community, and we ask that everyone share their thoughts respectfully. Those who have completed a request for recognition, for the recognition form will be called one at a time to step forward and state their name and city of residence. You don't have to state your address anymore. Please note, the speakers will have three minutes to express their thoughts. So, I have James Loftus.
You know why I'm here. I was praying, doing exercises in my front yard, when I was harassed by Officer Bevins. I, over the last week or so, emailed the chief, and I sent you an email clarifying, because apparently, the chief had responded to me. I just didn't get it because it was in my junk file. So, I clarified my testimony. She took my questions as if I was actually filing a complaint, and I'm pretty sure I made it clear in the last council meeting, I was not filing a complaint, okay? She then said that I used the Jedi mind trick on Bevins to say, you may go. But I want you to understand, I told him he was harassing me. You need to leave. You need to get the F out of here. Get away from me. He continued this for 20-something minutes before backup arrives. Now, I'm in fear for my life, okay? I put a tree between me and Prindell, because I think he's armed. I can't tell because I'm blinded. That puts me one step closer to Bevins. Bevins then sets his foot on my property to lunge at me, okay? I could see it in his face. I jump back. I point that his foot is on my property. I tell the officers, you two are my witnesses. I want you to write this in your report. Get the, out of here, you damn, okay? Am I making myself clear? I had asked this guy to leave multiple times. I've asked you and I to sit down and just go over the video. Let's substantiate my claims. So, in Pope John's letter to my questions, in which she attempts to exonerate the officers and their behavior, she says that the complaint was by a citizen for strange behavior, okay? So, if praying and exercising in your own front yard is strange behavior, then yes. Now, in the actual report, it says that, and I want you to understand, it's about 80 degrees. She saw one person is talking to himself and making noises, male in the gazebo. Bevins says he rolls up and doesn't see me having a yoga mat underneath me. I'm sitting down. I'm telling him, I don't want to engage with him. Leave. He chooses to remove the barrier and come around onto my sidewalk. I'm still, at this point, I'd gotten up, told him, went back to exercising. Then, he comes around the car. Now, he's a threat to me. Now, I can't leave. I keep telling him, go away. You're harassing me. So, I also want to point out that on my initial request, September 13th, 2024, I was issued a bill for $50, which would have included the body camera video. But then, on the 16th, she rescinded that. So, again, Mayor Pro Tem Sims, are you customarily not going to address citizens? I'm going to wrap this up real quick. Brian Quigley, the former mayor, reached out to me. We had discussions. No one from this council has reached out to me. There's been no discussion. I am asking you point-blank, would you sit down with me, go over the body camera video, just you and I? Substantiate these allegations, because what's left in here, I'm presenting this to you, are all the citations for the violations that I'm currently aware of. So, if I file a complaint, it will be in a captive form, and if you folks don't do something, you will be consenting to that officer's behavior. I want you to understand the federal statute for conspiracy, okay? This, this started out as simple trespass, and has escalated because of the denial of my rights. Please stop. Please contact me. Let's try to resolve this before it goes any further.
Go ahead, and if you could take a seat in the audience, I'm going to let Julia and the chief address some of your concerns.
So, I'm happy to address the comments, and just to be clear, there really isn't a role for counsel...
a role for counsel in this. The city did get a records request and we fulfilled that records request and within that, um, we informed him of the next steps if he did not agree or, um, wanted to, um, appeal the decision on the body cam. There is no, um, you know, we, we actually have spoken extensively with our city attorney on this. And it's, it is not appropriate to, um, to have, I mean, counsel is not a decision maker in this. You, um, really are not to be looking at the body cam footage yourselves. So that's, that is the response on that.
You have every right to manage this.
Point of order. President, we can't, we can't be having outbursts from the area. You had your time, Mr. Loftus.
You didn't ask any questions while I was up there.
It's not a question and answer session.
So, and to be clear, this is a personnel issue. It's not a policy level issue. So that's why there isn't a, um, a role for counsel in this. This is, have we followed the, the process? And he has, um, a path. He can choose to take that path if he wants. But it's not a decision for counsel to make on this.
Thanks, Julia.
I don't know if you wanted Chief Johns to add anything to that.
Well, she has something. I'm not going to force her to come up. I didn't know if she wanted to say anything.
So what I would say in this is, um, through his public comments, uh, some statements to a supervisor, which he was allowed to talk to within the first twenty-four hours after the call for service to clarify and ask questions, um, he chose to discontinue the conversation with the sergeant. Because he has made allegations very publicly and because of statements to the sergeant is why I clarified, I did investigate. We have a lot of documentation of timestamps on dispatch, um, body cam, police radio logs, um, that are contrary. And I put in the memo stating that we are on scene four and a half minutes, which is contrary to his first testimony of twenty, then twenty-five, then twenty-seven. So it has been cleared as a finding in my agency. It was passed up to Julia. Our city attorney has advised that there is not counsel authority over this. He has been advised on how to go through the proceedings if he wants any of the other public records requests. We have very set standards on the requests, how they're processed. And we're at that point where he's made other demands and threats and we've closed it out with what we've done and what we've said and follow up with the attorney.
I would like a chance for you to go ahead.
This isn't a public hearing. You took public testimony and, um, the, so.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to stop this here and move on with the meeting. Thanks, Chief Johns. I appreciate the, the talk. All right, next up, we have the public hearing, consideration of legislative code amendment to permit, to permit general merchandise use in the interchange development zone. So I have a blurb to read. Good evening, I'm Steve Sims, Council President. I will be presiding over the hearing. This is a time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of land use file number nine dash zero eight slash twenty-four concerning legislative amendments to the land use development code allowing with site plan review, the use of general merchandise stores in the interchange development zone. The hearing is now open. At the back counter is a copy of the proposed amendments, the agenda for this meeting, which lays out the order in which people will be called on to speak during the public hearing, the city's rule of procedure for land use public hearings, and a brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You're encouraged to obtain and read a copy of these documents as well. At this time, I'd ask the audience if there are any objections to notice for this hearing? Do we have any objections, objections at all? No? I hear none to the jurisdiction of the body to hear and consider this case. I hear none. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or bias by any members of this body? I don't see any. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name and, uh, what city you live in for the record. As a participant in the hearing, the city is required to notify you of the final results of the process. We are now ready for the staff report.
And Council President Sims, um, just a clarification on that because I noticed you, you paused and corrected the address. Because this is a land use related, we will, um, at the very least, need to receive the address on paper so that they, because they're party to the decision. So as long as the address is on there, they do not need to state their address for the, the public record, but we need to make sure that we have an address.
Okay, my correction on that, address is necessary. Is there anything more for staff report?
Oh, yes. So, good evening, I'm Jennifer Sisliano, the Community and Economic Development Director here. Tonight, you're asked to consider an amendment to our land use code that will allow general merchandise stores within the interchange zone. This request was initiated by the Planning Commission per our code, uh, but originated from Dollar General's hope to establish a store in the zone close to the highway interchange. Both the Planning Commission and city staff have carefully analyzed and held a public hearing and they recommend against, um, the change. The ID zone was specifically created to support businesses serving travelers' needs such as fuel stations, hotels possibly, and convenience stores. It is also worth noting that our comprehensive plan discourages general commercial development at the Highway twenty-two interchange. Instead, um, wanting, intending to create a welcoming entry that reflects the city of Staton. While there could be economic benefits, including job creation and tax revenue, um, we should consider general merchandise store aligns with our vision, which we've established for Staton's gateway. Our goal is to protect a distinctive identity to the visitors entering our community. It is critical that we select businesses that support the vision. I encourage that you consider whether this type of business truly supports the long-term goals of the area. So a few other things that I had mentioned in my staff report is that, um, the ID zone just covers four parcels. So, um, two of them are already developed there, Arco and Dairy Queen. So that's the type of business, uh, that is supposed to go in there. The purpose of the zone, I'll read it, is to assure the land located within fifteen-hundred feet of the highway entrance exit ramp is available for uses that are oriented to providing goods and services, uh, to the traveling public. In providing the location for highway oriented service firms, it is essential that the principal function of the interchange, carrying traffic to and fro the highway in safe and expedient manner, be preserved. And in addition, our comprehensive plan, which we have to be consistent with, does say in our economic development chapter, uh, the policy of the city is to discourage commercial development at Highway twenty-two. And then the action item is the city shall continue the interchange development zone near Highway twenty-two to limit commercial uses to travel oriented. So because of those, because of the purpose of, of that particular zone and because explicitly in the comprehensive plan, it, it limit, it doesn't say not general merchandise, but it said it needs to be traveler oriented. So the Planning Commission, uh, found that general merchandise to them is not, uh, travel oriented. So we're here today to discuss that.
Any questions for Jennifer?
Any questions for Jennifer? Is that the lot that's adjacent to Cascade Highway or is it the next one over that?
It is. It's the, it's the one.
Okay, that's what I thought. I was trying to figure that out.
Counsel, can I also just, um, make sure you know, um, and I think it's at your table, we did receive written testimony from the chamber regarding this, um, this afternoon. So that's part of your record. It's the same as any public testimony. Um, and then I think that, um, representatives from the Dollars, Dollar General. Okay, they're not planning on speaking?
Okay, so, go ahead, Counselor Rort.
I have a question about the, that intersection and, um, like information on the traffic. Because with the apartments, when they did this study, were those apartments taken into consideration? Like, was it, was it just what was already there or taking into those?
Oh, the traffic reports that they did? Honestly, I don't think so. I think that they were just looking at, um, probably information they had prior.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, so the, the traffic study that they would have had to do for this proposal is different than the traffic study that you do for, um, development because it's, it's called the transportation planning rule where they're looking at, um, zone, this isn't really a zone change, but similar of like what the traffic impact would be. I'm not, the apartments were already factored into our transportation system plan because that's the zoning and that's the density. What they are proposing to do is something different and they needed to demonstrate that it wasn't going to have as an adverse impact on the overall traffic. So I don't, yeah, I don't know if they did, but it didn't matter because it wasn't that kind of a traffic study.
Yes, yeah, that's correct. So they were looking at, um, if you change it to general merchandise, that use brings a certain amount of traffic and how that would affect, yeah.
And then is it still within that?
Yes, it is. They did find that it was, it was, uh, it would not increase the traffic.
Okay. Would they have to do any improvements, obviously improvements to the land, but in traffic, safety improvements?
Um, there, there is, um, they would have to do some improvements. I don't think, um, just to the, to the site. I'm trying to remember what the, it's been a while since I looked at the, at the site plan, but they definitely would need to do some site improvements, yes. I don't, and, uh.
The, the reason I'm asking about that is particularly when it was apartments were built and then now we're considering the safety of like putting in that crosswalk, um, so people can, can cross the main road, but there's all those houses and whatnot in the back. So how is that going to affect pedestrians and the walkability of that area? Because people are going to go to that store that walk in that area. So are they, is that something that is going to be taken into consideration building that?
Um, there is, there's a general, um, improvements that a development has to do to certain amount of right of way, um, public utility easement, sidewalks if they're needed. And I think all of those things are part of the development. But it isn't, it's going to affect the actual site. It's not going to make any like new crosswalk or anything like that. If that's what, yeah.
And just keeping in mind, the decision before the council isn't the development of that site. It's whether or not the uses on that site should include general merchandise. So, and it's not just this one, it's another one adjacent to it. So that's the decision that you're making. The, just the, the development of the site is scheduled for, um, Planning Commission in December, no, at the end of November. But the decision from the Planning Commission might vary depending on the decision of council
Thanks, Jennifer. So next up, we have a public comment. So Jennifer Carter? Actually pronounced one right.
Hi, uh, let me, I have a, an eye injury, so if I wink at you, it, there's no intent behind it. Uh, my name's Jennifer Carter. I live at four eleven Whitney Street, just down the road from the proposed Dollar General location. I've been a resident of Staton for twenty-one years and I've always described our town as a charming, close-knit community. However, I'm concerned that the proposed Dollar General store will undermine the qualities that make Staton unique. With four discount stores within a short distance, we have ample access to affordable goods. The addition of another dollar store would pose a significant threat to our community's unique character and economic vitality. While offering low prices on a limited selection of goods, these stores can have a detrimental effect on local businesses and the overall quality of life in our community. Dollar stores often undercut local businesses, particularly grocery stores, leading to closures and job losses. Communities thrive on diversity and uniqueness. By replacing local businesses with generic dollar stores, we risk losing the qualities that make our town unique. Studies have shown a correlation between dollar stores and increased crime rates, including shoplifting and robberies. Driven by a focus on cost cutting, dollar stores often prioritize profits over security. And this has led to several factors that make these stores vulnerable to crime. They frequently operate with minimal staff. The understaffed nature of dollar stores make it easier for shoplifters to steal merchandise without being caught. The high volume of cash transactions make them a frequent target for armed robberies. And many dollar stores rely on surveillance cameras rather than in-person security guards, making it easier for criminals to operate. Dollar General has faced significant scrutiny regarding working, worker rights and safety. In recent years, numerous instances of labor disputes and OSHA violations have occurred at these stores. Workers at Dollar General have attempted to unionize, seeking better wages, working conditions, and job security, but those efforts have been met with resistance from Dollar General. Many Dollar General employees earn below a living wage, leading to a financial hardship and reliance on public assistance. The median annual income for a Dollar General employee is just fourteen thousand dollars per year. Dollar stores are repeatedly fined for OSHA, by OSHA for serious safety violations such as blocked exits, electrical hazards, et cetera. Lastly, a large portion of profits from chain stores like Dollar General flow out of our community to corporate headquarters. These corporations often prioritize shareholder dividends and executive compensation over local investment, whereas locally owned businesses play a vital role in our community's economy. We must protect our community from the negative impacts of dollar stores. I urge you to vote no on this legislative code amendment. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Well, I have another chance on here for counsel, questions from the council, if anybody has anything else. Quiet. All right, so it's, uh, staff summertime then.
Yes, um, so before you, um, you have the, um, ability to change our code, to make general merchandise of it, um, allowed in the interchange development zone, which was probably just two zones. I think, um, you do need to think about the fact that it has been vacant for a very long time and, um, maybe we could think of allowing other uses in there. But at the same time, uh, it looks like, uh, feedback I've gotten from the community and from the Planning Commission is that they don't recommend, um, this particular use in the interchange zone, so.
Can I ask a question? I do have a question.
Go ahead.
So with the, with the list of permitted. So with the list of permitted land use, why do we, did the Planning Commission talk about why, oh my goodness, like what we're changing it to? What is it? General?
General merchandise stores.
General merchandise stores. Like why was that not part of it?
Because they didn't feel, it was supposed to be targeted for travel-oriented. So they felt that you, that you would go to the store and you would go there and shop. It isn't like a gassing up and going or going through a drive-through and going. That's, that was what they thought.
I do have another question.
Yes, Counsel Rourke.
How much public comment did the Planning Commission get for this issue?
They, someone spoke against it and I also received another comment against it. And then we also received something today from the chamber as well.
Oh, yeah, I got, I got the chamber thing. Okay.
And then also there was, because there was several, several times that it was in front of the Planning Commission, and I'm just remembering, I don't have dates, but I remember there was one where it was continued and there was a pretty good-sized room, there were quite a few people in the room if I recall, and then it was continued to another date. And then the planning, I might be getting things confused now, but the Planning Commission held a hearing. I think that there was some testimony at that time and they took no action, which wasn't the, they needed to make a recommendation. So then they had another public hearing and then there was testimony. So I don't know if in that first one, how much testimony there was and if it was different.
Yeah, there was nothing that was for it. I know that. But I mean, I think that, you know, this is a kind of, you know, it has been vacant for a long time. So that's a, you know, and, and I think an argument could be made if you wanted to, that it could be travel-oriented, but I can see that it's not. That's all.
Thank you, thank you.
That's all.
Is there anything else from you, Julia?
Nope, not for me.
All right, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Next, we have counsel deliberation. If, I guess the options are not to make a motion or to make a motion to continue this.
Mayor Bertam. This is Counsel Patty. I don't know about the rest of you all, but I'm comfortable moving forward and leaving the code unchanged based on what we're hearing and seeing here.
Mayor Bertam.
Counsel Julia.
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I, I really don't think that this is serving the benefit of the community or enhancing livability in any way. And I don't believe it's with, I do not think that this amendment is being requested because it fits within this zone or intention. I think it's for the benefit of the single business. And so for that reason, I would also agree.
Counsel Rourke, you have any thoughts?
I agree.
I am also in concurrence.
Okay, with that, it sounds like we know what we want to do. Where are we? So we don't have to do anything.
So, yeah, I think that the consensus is that there is no motion.
The consensus is no motion.
And the request does not move forward because there is no motion to direct us to do anything different, so.
Correct, okay.
Thank you for putting that so eloquently.
I'm just thinking, just to be super, like, super tight, maybe it would be helpful for you to make a motion that says you do not want to move this forward, just so there's no question that that's the council's decision and direction.
So we would need to say it's a, I'm sorry.
Mayor Bertam.
Go ahead, Counsel Julia.
Yeah, so just, just to clarify, so I would make a motion that there is no motion, or a motion to deny?
A motion to take no further action.
Okay. I make a motion to take no further action on the consideration of the legislative code amendment to permit general merchandise use in an interchange development zone.
I will second that.
The motion has been forwarded and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, guys. Sorry, I just sort of threw that one at you at the last minute, but just to like button it up and make sure it's perfectly clear.
So I believe we're complete with that. And now it's time for James for the quarter one financial update.
Good evening. James Brand, City Finance Director. We have the first quarter finance report for the fiscal year '24-'25. And I think, as I said last year, for the first quarter report, it's a little bit of an odd report just because of the timing of revenues and expenditures. It doesn't give a lot of data, but it is the first three months of the year. And so we've presented it in its familiar format. And there's really also not a whole lot to talk about at this time. I will go over some of the revenue and expenditure outliers, but if you would like to see a different format of report, or if you have any questions tonight or later, you can always follow up and let me know and I'll try to get back to you. So right now, the 25% point of the year, we've collected 22% of the revenues. And this is without any of the property tax income, which we'll be receiving shortly. So it's not an alarm that we're under-collected at this point. The intergovernmental category, you'll see has a, compared to last year, it's in the red there, 102,000. And that's because compared to last year, we received two of the ODOT STP grant annual payments. That was an anomaly for that year. So this year, we are on track with our budget and do anticipate to receive what we believe we will. The interest earnings are also higher than last year due to the higher interest rates that we're receiving at Umpqua Bank currently. We do anticipate the interest rates to fall. And I'm looking into some long-term, longer-term investment strategies that we might take advantage of right now. I'm trying to incorporate some changes in our fiscal policy that would just give a little bit of leeway in investments. I won't, I'm not going to take any action on that until I get some more feedback from you guys, if you're comfortable with that. I would definitely prioritize safety and liquidity of our investments if we need the cash, but there probably are some opportunities for longer-term interest earnings if we want to explore that. So I'm looking at options right now. Talking about the expenditures, overall, we are lower than budgeted, just 21% spent at the 25th percent of the year. General Fund Operations is at 60% spent already. That's because we've transferred the ARPA funds, so transfers out count in the expenditures category here. So the ARPA funds represent 921,000 of that category. Those funds are being spent now on wastewater and stormwater projects in Ida Street. And the mayor council, city council area is slightly overspent, but that's because we've made the annual payments to SMAC and the Midland Valley Council of Governments. So those, again, that's just a timing issue on that payment. The pool is slightly overspent, but their revenues are higher than budgeted, which more than compensates for their overspending. So that area is actually doing pretty well. So if you look at the bottom line at the first page, there's negative $5,800,000 in the budget. So that means we're planning to spend more than income for the year. And while that is true, I'll explain it a bit. Again, the expenditures include transfers out. So while some of these funds are transferred from one fund to another, they're counted as a transfer out. And then if you spend it in that same year, it's double-counted as expenditures. So the ARPA money fits under that, as well as our SDC funds that we transfer from the SDC fund to the operating fund. So we have 1.8 million in SDC funds that are double-counted. And then that 921,000 in ARPA funds are double-counted as well. So that kind of explains that. I've also provided the cash balances by fund. And then finally, I just wanted to introduce the last of my staff that I haven't talked about yet, and that is Nancy Morris. If you've come into City Hall, you may have met Nancy. The three words I put up there for her are local, dedicated worker, and volunteer. So she, Nancy is a local. She has attended Stateon Elementary, middle, and high schools, graduating there. She knows this community very well. I challenge you to quiz her on a name or an address and she can give you the other. If you give an address, she very well may be able to tell you who lives at that, that location. If you give her a name, she might be able to give you their address. She's also bilingual, which is a huge help in our community. She's very helpful for many customers. She looks for ways to improve processes at work. And the volunteer part, she coaches youth soccer, baseball, and basketball. She's got two active sons and so she will be in a gym or on a field many days after work. So I would be happy to answer any questions you have on the financial side now or later up as a follow-up if you have any.
Do we have any questions from anybody? I will open it up for public comment if there are any for the financial update. Doesn't look like we have any. And the last thing is counsel discussion, if there's any discussion on this issue. Doesn't look like there is. Thank you, James. That was, that was great. Well, communication from city staff?
I have a few things. Just in your weekly update I mentioned, but I wanted to mention it publicly here as well, Republic Services has sent a letter indicating that they plan to increase the rates by 2.4%. If you recall, when they came last time, they did, you know, we did a presentation, explained a lot of the background into why their rates are what they are. And the resolution that council passed authorizing the rate increase at the time allowed rate increases without needing to come back and explain it all in detail to the council as long as it met certain parameters, of which this does. So it's not more than once a year, not six months, not less than six months between the last rate increase. It's less than 5% of a rate increase and it's in accordance with the CPI. So with that, I'm just more informing council. If that is a concern or questions, let me know. There is within the resolution, you guys can, can stop that authority at any time you want, but that gives you not having to, to have work sessions and dig in every single time, as long as it's within certain parameters. So I wanted to let council know about that. I'm trying to think of what I want to, oh, Counselor Sims forwarded a request for information from a former member of council, who was the mayor, about, just sort of some concerns about Comcast and some sidewalks, areas not being repaired. I sent that message to Ian, who is in Public Works and responsible for doing the inspections and working closely with Comcast. And they are on it. There's been, there was a little bit of a delay because of weather, but he said that actually within the next several days, weather permitting, that that will actually be getting get taken care of. I'm seeing maybe questions from Counselor Patty. Yes?
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that. Just while we're on this topic, I was just kind of curious, and if you don't have the answer for this prepared tonight, I understand, I didn't tell you ahead of time. When Comcast or whoever's working for them, their contractors, go out there and they tear up a sidewalk panel, are they required to then replace that sidewalk panel with a new sidewalk panel, or are they permitted to then leave like an asphalt mixture that looks absolutely abhorrent instead? Just curious.
I believe that they would be required to replace it with another concrete panel. I do know, just in conversations, because we've received complaints, there, there's sort of like rolling crews. So there's a crew that comes and sets up and then they move on, and then a crew that comes and does some cleanup and then they move on. And then, so it's possible that there's some temporary stuff. Michael, I don't know if you want to, if you have anything more to add than that, or if that's, so Michael. Yeah, Michael manages Ian and is not day-to-day involved with, with all the Comcast stuff, but talks with Ian quite a bit. So I don't know if you wanted to add anything.
Push it on. Oh, sweet, okay, thanks. So to get back to your, about the terrible-looking patch, that is temporary, just to create a hard surface to get over that area. They then will come back, clean those out, form up the edges, and pour brand-new concrete to create, to standard our sidewalk, to get it repaired. So my understanding is also they are scheduled to start tomorrow with the clean weather. So they should be getting some of this repair work done, hopefully a lot of it. Off the top of my head, I wouldn't be able to give you a direct answer on how much, but I do know they're supposed to be in town tomorrow, starting tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I'm happy to hear that.
And I will say, I mean, because of the, the way they're rolling it out, it does, it may seem like there's, it's longer than it should. So if you feel like, or anybody that talks to you feels like it's, they have questions, give us a call. I mean, we can look into it. That doesn't, you know, you know, we will make sure that it is up and up. You know, they also have been very responsive. There have been breaks, there have been issues. When we are aware of it, we report that to Comcast. And my understanding is they're pretty quick to, to fix it. But don't, don't feel like you can't tell people to give us a call because we are getting calls and, you know, I just, I don't want people to just think they just need to deal with it. If they're not sure, give us a call. I, I'm just trying to, trying to decide how I want to do this. I wanted to give a little bit of an update on Riverfront Park South I mentioned in our weekly update. And I'm more just telling you so that you know that we're stressed and that we're committed to making sure everything moves forward. There was a little bit of a misunderstanding with when we had to have things done on that project and obligated. We thought that by entering into the contract with the county that addressed the obligation that the funds be obligated by the end of this year. Apparently, that's not the case. And so we are scrambling, Michael is scrambling, to get something ready to bid so that we can have a contract in place by the end of this year. That might mean that we might have to have a special work session, you know, or a special session with council if we need to authorize something. So I just wanted you to know, it is not normal, it's not standard, we don't love it, we're not, you know, it's a, it's a rush and we don't like rushing when we don't have to. But I just wanted to kind of let you know, we are on it, but it is a little stressful. So if anybody is talking with any county commissioners and they're like, are you guys going to finish that project? We are doing our darndest to make sure that happens, so. Any questions on that? That's, I'm sort of like dropping that, or we can talk offline if you guys want to on that. I also, sorry, I was also asked to kind of just give an update on the Public Works Director and where we're at with that. And I don't have a huge update. What I had planned on doing was getting an interim in and just sort of like sitting on it for about six months or so before we do a full on it for about six months or so before we do a full recruitment. That proved to be a little bit more challenging than I had hoped, so we still don't have an interim. We have a great team. Michael has really amazingly stepped up, and he's really managing the capital projects. He did that to a lesser extent before, but has really stepped up and had to figure things out that he didn't even, weren't even on his radar, projects that hadn't been communicated down the line. So stepping up and doing those capital projects, we have a great operations supervisor that there's really no difference or change, except he's coming to me and Michael for questions rather than Lance. And then Danielle is our wastewater supervisor, and really no change there either, just kind of keeps doing the work. So it's a little bit more stressful for me and Michael, just in terms of, like, more work, but we're handling it and doing okay. I'm starting to kind of solidify a little bit more about what I think I want to be doing with the recruitment, and so we'll, I'll be sharing that as I solidify that a little bit more. And one of the things that I would definitely like to do is have a work session with council and get a sense of what it is that you're wanting. You know, I know that there's been some discussion about council's role in hiring, you know, just sort of like having some say and influence over the hiring, but I think that, and we could talk more about that too, but what I would really like to get is, what are, at the policy level, what do you want in a public works director? What is that vision that you're wanting, that you're kind of directing me to seek? So that's my thought and plan, is just kind of like having a work session and talking about it a little bit deeper. So think about that for yourself, of like, if you were to, you know, similar to with the city manager, what qualities, what skills, what sort of type of manager, leader, would you, at the policy level, want to see as a public works director? So, putting that out there. And then I think last, but least, last but not least, last and least, and another, just putting it out there, Jennifer reminded me, we don't have a liaison to the Arts Commission, and we had originally, when we established liaisons to different boards and commissions, we didn't have the Arts Commission up and going yet, so she was asking about that. I think it probably makes sense to wait until the election is over and we know who we have, and so making a decision probably at the beginning of 2025, but thinking about that and your current position or liaison assignment and whether or not changes are desired, so just kind of putting that out there, that we probably want to discuss that. And I would like to, at the beginning of next year, when we've had that conversation, maybe add another spot on the agenda for councilors to report out what is happening at their liaison meetings, if they have been able to attend, or if they, you know, if they missed one, if they could get something from the staff, so that you can give an update or ask the staff person to come and give an update. I just think that would be a great way for you all to share what's happening at the other boards and commissions throughout the city and have more conversation about that. That's it. Chief, that's it, except for Chief, wanted to come up and say something.
Mayor Protem, council and staff. So we're feeling like we just survived summer and all the activities and the high call load, and then we're heading into the holidays and trying to regroup for that. Enjoyed holiday, sorry, Halloween trick-or-treating with our staff and city staff downtown. November 18th, we have Coffee with the Cop, where we invite people to come and share questions, concerns, maybe what's going on in their neighborhood, or things they'd like us to give more attention to, or just have a conversation about community and public safety. That's November 18th at McDonald's in the morning, and then we'll be assisting with the community dinner again and participating in No Shave November. So our way of supporting cancer awareness, kind of a fun thing, our guys will be, that want to participate, be clean-shaven and growing the beard all November for a beard contest. So they get pretty excited about it and pretty into it, and it's just a way to fundraise, bring awareness, and encourage public donations as well. And then I just wanted to say, we've talked before, we had the forum, we've talked about some of our processes, but just in law enforcement, we work in a world of what we can prove, a world based on facts and what can be verified. We work in a world of documentation, so timestamp documents, recorded dispatch, phone lines, radio recordings, body cameras, phone call logs, GPS, all time and date stamped. At State and PD, we work with a team with high integrity, strong work ethics, compassion, professionalism, and a team who treats people with respect. As a team, we work to hold each other accountable and to hold each other to high standards. As a standard practice, if citizen calls in with questions or concerns, we make a supervisor available to listen and answer questions. If the person chooses to move their inquiry to a complaint, we investigate their allegations and provide them with a finding. If an investigation, documentation prove we were not working to meet our standards, we're outside of policy, or some other issues, our agency and the city absolutely work to remedy this and address it as appropriate within applicable federal, state, and local laws, municipal and county rules, and requirements of collective bargaining agreements. So it's through citizen comments and input that we ensure our department's mission and our community's expectations are consistent with one another. It's our policy that all our officers enforce the law, follow department policy and directives, and when having contact with community members, act professionally, impartially, and with courtesy. I truly do believe that citizen input helps us to grow and improve and definitely gives us perspective. When people make public records requests, we acknowledge that receipt of request. We've got five days to acknowledge the receipt, and then once the deposit fee is paid, we have 10 days to fulfill the request. We've got a lot of rules, regulations, policies guiding public records, what can be released and what is protected. Depending on the request, we acknowledge what we can release by law, what we cannot release. If we are not the custodian of the records, we refer them to the appropriate agency. If we're not releasing records, we advise the requister of the process to challenge the decision. When we take a call for service, we strive to call the reportee back, as time allows to give them feedback on the outcome. This allows for communication, an opportunity to explain what we can and cannot do, what we did find, and maybe provide some perspective. We also work to give feedback in case where the problem, in case the problems persist as how to approach the issue. So if my officers respond to a call, it's our practice that we would call the reportee back, kind of depending on what the type of call is, that may happen right away and may happen later. But again, that feedback and communication is important to us. We work hard to create partnerships in our community. We know we need citizens to communicate with us, report incidents, and partner with us to be successful in reducing crime and keeping our community safe. We also work hard to build trust in our community. We have worked hard to make ourselves accessible at public meetings and community events, and we want our community to know us and to better understand our jobs and our roles in the community. So I just want to use this time to think, there's a lot of people in the room that we've partnered with, whether it's through community agencies, community events, or calls for service, and appreciate the support and the trust in our agency.
Thank you, Chief. That was really good.
Real quick, Chief, I was just curious, sorry. What time is Coffee with the Cop?
7:30, but we go until 9, 9:30. We'll stay, there's people interested.
Yep.
Yep.
McDonald's, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You ready, Councilor Julia?
This, are we on just announcements from, is that what it is?
I think we're just, we're at Communication and Council.
Yeah, Communication and Council, that's it. Yeah, I mean, I'm sure that everyone here, if you're watching this video, if you're here, you've probably voted, but vote, vote tomorrow, or buy it tomorrow, whatever. And, yeah. And you can drop off your ballot, right, at the library, and then, is there other places? Is that the main place in State? Is there any?
It's only.
It's only at the library, right?
And it's not at the library.
Sorry.
There's a drop box right next to the library.
There is a drop box right next to the library. Do not use the library. That's actually a really good point. Don't put it in the drop box for the books, put it in the ballot drop box, which is adjacent to the library, on the side of the building, on the street.
And if you are unsure, our Facebook page has a post that shows you, has a little aerial, and then shows you where it exactly is, so.
Yes. So do that. So vote, and go to that Facebook page if you need to know where it is, but vote. And, yeah, and just, I think also just remembering as citizens that we're, I mean, as everyone says, but just important to maintain unity and peace, love, and understanding in these times. Yeah, I think that's everything. I did want to thank the Chief and Julia and everyone just for, yeah, just for your comments, I think they were really helpful in this situation, I feel a lot of confidence in that process, and, yeah, and thank you for handling it with straightforwardness and grace.
Councilor Hurd?
Thank you, Councilor Sims. I wanted to echo Councilor Julia's sentiment to go out and vote. We do have that drop box, so you can drop off your ballot until tomorrow at 8:00 PM, and if you, I speak to classes all the time about being on the city council and why it's important, and it's important because you have the opportunity twice a month to come and air your grievances. We're very accessible, you come here and, we're part of the community, we're right here in your face, and you have the opportunity to change or kind of mold what your community looks like. And we have two council seats that are open, so if you haven't done that yet, go ahead and do that. And then I also just wanted to say, as the daughter of two Navy veterans, thank you for all of your service. Got two councilors over here, thank you for your service, and to all of you out there, we really appreciate you, and it's on my heart. Thank you.
Councilor Patty?
Hey, thanks, I appreciate that. Yeah, I also want to add and piggyback everything the other two councilors just said about voting, and then I just want to say a special thank you to David and Mark and Jeannie as the recipient of one of those care packages when I deployed to Kuwait in Afghanistan. I just want to say thank you, they were much appreciated and enjoyed by myself and brothers and sisters out there, so keep doing what you're doing by supporting heroes as they return home, and they need help here. I can't wait to jump in and help out with what you guys got going on, so awesome, thank you, keep it up.
As a Navy veteran that spent my entire adult life in the Navy, I do, I have received some care packages, and we all really appreciate those. I've done nine deployments myself, so I've done a few deployments, but thanks for coming to all the veteran organizations, and I spent a lot of time with the VFW, so, I'm a member of the Albany VFW, but I'm there quite a bit.
You better not say that before the election, you gotta say that after the election.
All right, time is 8:25, we're adjourned. Yeah, I gotta join a different VFW now.